Cecilia Aragon.
Present.
Emily Stanton.
Here.
Kim Swanson.
Here.
Janice Marshall.
Here.
Beth Fair.
Here.
Carrie.
Martha.
Here.
Steve Gosar.
Here.
Nate Martin. Alex Christine. Seven present.
Thank you. All right, first up tonight is graduation requirements. Dr. Kness.
Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight I'm going to talk just about the graduation requirements process. We have, I think, additional conversations upcoming with regard to the substance of the recommendations of various teams that have been working on updating and revising graduation requirements. I'll leave it to them to communicate their recommendations and rationales later, but to give you some sense of the process that has been ongoing and is that is continuing at this point so that you have a frame of reference as they're sharing as we come into future meetings together. So I will maybe start us off talking a little bit about how we got to this point in some of the larger state level things that are -- nope, on? It's on? Never. There it goes. Okay. That are happening at the state level that are causing some changes that we don't have much choice about and then sort of where we're exercising some choice and bringing forward some different recommendations. So, right now, there are two things at the state level, one that has happened and one that's sort of under construction. So, Chapter 10 rules have changed at the state level. They were signed in July by the governor. Chapter 10 rules are the set of rules that dictate how it is that we structure the assignment and access to standards. So, there are 10 standards areas that we are required legally to provide opportunities for and around for students. That applies to K-12 structures in our system most directly with relationship to graduation requirements. It applies to the way that we assign standards to courses and the access points to those courses. So, historically, Chapter 10 required that we assign all standards to a course, did not require that students access that course. So, what that means is that we had hundreds and hundreds of standards. They existed in courses. Students may or may not take those courses, meaning at the end of the day, they would not necessarily graduate with the same sets of outcomes with regard to what they had learned. The AG's office and different legal arms at the state level got involved and said, "Oh, you can't do that. That's not allowed. We're constitutionally required to provide equal and comparable opportunities and access and outcomes for students in our schools." So, the state has done a couple of different things over time, ultimately landing in the Chapter 10 rules that we have now. Those drove -- were the primary driver in the decisions and structures that were made for the graduation updates. We also then looked at then what has to happen in policy to reflect updates and course progressions and outcomes for students overall. In the coming weeks, we'll be looking at drafts of the policy. One of the things that you will notice structurally will be that there is a differentiation between LHS, Rock River, and Whiting High School. That is primarily because the shifts in Chapter 10 rules require that we consider the pathways for students in slightly different ways because the resources and scale in each of those buildings is different. So, there will be structural things that we intend to maintain and keep consistent. There will also be things that will need to be somewhat differentiated across those buildings. Oh, I got my one click pointed down. Okay. So, as I alluded to, this summer, a massive amount of work was happening. You've gotten the joy of approving all sorts of additional work approvals in the personnel recommendations. That is a function of the scale of work that took place this summer. Trustee Stanton was able to join us for part of that work with the math team. But each of the four core content areas spent a substantial amount of time reviewing and auditing the standards and reconciling those with their current structures. So, they spent time studying where are we right now, what's happening with standards alignment, what might we need to shift just to be minimally at a compliance state with the Chapter 10 rules, and then how might we negotiate that through the lens of what it is that we hope to accomplish for students in terms of choice, in terms of pathways, and in terms of ultimately achieving graduation. So, each team tackled that work slightly differently. There is a reason that it was the four core content areas that started in the most substantial components of work because the Chapter 10 rules apply to them differently than they do to elective course areas. So, elective course areas, their rules allow them to kind of continue in their current structures with regard to standards alignment. For core content, they're the ones who have what we call the all-in-all rule, all standards, all students. All standards must have opportunities to access all of those standards, and then within that, we must assess and do our due diligence to ensure proficiency with all of those standards. So, the core content areas worked on differentiating where they're putting their different standards and then what they might do in terms of progressions, and with particular emphasis on making sure that they minimized barriers to graduation and maximized opportunities for choice and pathways for students. Right now, each core content area has identified a primary pathway. This is the primary progression that we anticipate students would go through in order to achieve graduation, and they are in the process of working then on like what would the or pathways look like for students who might not choose that primary pathway. And I think we actually have some tomorrow is there this summer with us. So, at any point in time, you can ask them. So, they, as I said, they audited content standard alignment with their current course progressions. There's a teeny tiny screenshot. It's not hugely consequential, but you can see that what they did is reconcile and look at where standards fall in current courses, what standards aren't aligned with current courses, flagged in red places where there were things that were overlapping. That was primarily to then determine the primary assignment of the standard set. In the overall progression of what you will see coming forward is that there is a lot of work happening to try and define what it means to have an outcome within a particular course. So, for example, in social studies, if a student is to take a civics course, even if they take street law, or they take GOPo, or they take -- that those outcomes would be comparable and equitable outcomes for the course, even if the how of the course looks slightly different to meet the needs of the students. At the end of the day, they need to pass those district assessments. They need to have those ultimate outcomes be the same for each other. So, they then went in and identified the potential progression. So, as I said, right now, each core content area has a primary progression that has been recommended, or that they will be coming forward with a recommendation, and they're working over time on those ors. So, to clarify process and what that means ultimately for you is that in addition to thinking about policy, that would mean that when a course comes forward, one of the things that we will need to ensure is that it meets that set of standards that are addressed and that it gets classified appropriately under that header. So, I use the example of civics. So, for example, if someone from the social studies department brings forward a course proposal, we would ask ourselves, is the standards alignment comparable to the other courses so that the outcomes are the same? And then, is it appropriately classified in the course catalog? When you look at the course catalog, then, you will have a quick way to compare variability in the number of offerings and choice within each of those course headers. If what we end up with is one choice in U.S. Studies and nine choices in civics, that might beg some questions on how we're distributing the course offerings and choices for students. And then, as we've explored ad nauseam in the previous years, when we do that, it makes staffing kind of difficult. So, we also want to be considering then in the catalog itself, how courses are distributing and what's happening. So, ultimately, the shifts in the policy structure are intended to also clarify each of those phases of review that you do and what purpose they serve in making sure that we maintain alignment toward that graduation outcome for students. So, they -- each of those teams, one of the things that I would give massive amounts of kudos to each team is that they spent extensive amounts of time mapping out, I think I have up here maybe a science example, but they spent time going through and they brainstormed. They sort of looked at the world as their oyster. What are the different things that we could possibly do to stay within the constraints of the rules? They mapped out affordances for students. They mapped out limitations for students. They mapped out affordances for teachers, for students, sustainability, staffing implications, and tried to look as comprehensively as possible at each one of the options that they had put on the table so that they could weigh and value what it is that we are able to accomplish for students with the reality of, I'll pick on science for example, they have very, very specialized certification areas. So, from a staffing perspective, as we've all experienced, we have to also consider the sustainability of staffing particular types of courses and course structures. Each department took a lot of time to really carefully weigh that out and to consider how is it that we maintain any of these recommendations that we make. We also have, moving forward, we'll talk a little bit about PE, but PE kind of falls in a funky spot. They've also done that same work to weigh out affordances, limitations, sustainability, because as we all know, there's a difference between certain types of courses. We don't want to do a lot of work to establish a structure that as soon as we have, we lose a staff member, we're renegotiating and revisiting that entire structure. So, I cannot emphasize enough the massive amount of work that they did and the thoughtfulness and the selfless stance that they took on behalf of students to really try and weigh out what do we need to consider on their behalf and what do we sort of take away or offer when we choose different progressions or structures. So, as I said, they now have identified a primary progression for their courses. This is what would be reflected in the policy structure, is sort of those headers for each of those primary progressions with our ongoing work as a collective to be to consider how it is that we're weighing out the ors, or the alternative courses that would replace things in the progression for students while maintaining both college and career readiness. So, there is also a lot of work happening all the time in those or conversations to make sure that if we say a student can take one class or another, we haven't inadvertently compromised their college readiness or their career readiness. And there is a lot that weighs into that beyond just the content standards in terms of the course structure and the types of tasking that happens within that. Again, those are things that then show up in the course proposal as considerations for what's happening for students because in addition to core content, we have sort of those dispositional and skills-based components that we want to be cognizant of. If one student gets an opportunity to build lots and lots of sort of real-life skills and one doesn't, have we maintained the college and career readiness pathways? So, that or component is very under construction at this point in time and is something that I would really encourage as we consider to think, continue to think about how the different layers of work that you approve come forward, how those considerations play into the way that we review course structures and think about courses, how those courses then fit into the catalog, and then how the catalog then provides choice and opportunity for students in these, achieving these graduation requirements. I got nothing. So, you can just see an example here. This is the structure that is intended to go into the course catalog at the front of each of the core content areas and elective areas so that a parent or any student who's looking at course offerings can very transparently see when that falls in the progression and then what the course offerings would be in those progressions. There's sort of a deliberate choice to articulate that in the catalog as opposed to the policy, particularly because the catalog is a bit more dynamic. You look at it every single year. We don't have three readings. So, it can be more flexible and responsive to students, but you can expect that this outline would then be visible at the front of each of those 10 content areas to delineate what those progressions look like for families more transparently and for students. I don't know what I'm doing. Oh, I skipped one. Okay. Oh, yep, we don't need there. So, here's where we are. The four core content areas have identified their primary progression, and they've worked to assure that those meet the Chapter 10 requirements. The elective teams and special education counseling departments, we have all met with those departments as well at this point in time. They've each had time together. We've overviewed Chapter 10 policy changes, considered things that might need to be considered or integrated. PE in particular, so one of the sort of maybe fun facts not everybody is aware of with regard to the specialness of PE. At the state level, there is no legislated requirement for PE. None. The state does not require PE for graduation. Hathaway does not require PE to access Hathaway funds, but Chapter 10 treats PE as core content. So, PE is in a very funky spot because they have some of the rules, but not all of the rules. So, PE has also met independent of sort of the other two classifications of groups to do some of that same work, to consider what they would recommend, the affordances to students, the limitations, the affordances to staff, sustainability, looking at how that programming structure might work out moving forward. So, just as we move forward to be aware, when you see PE, it's just kind of this funny space. The same is true for health. The number of PE standards and health standards are not the same. So, as you sort of look at distributions of time or credits, those sometimes are playing into how they've weighed out what they would recommend or require from students. And some of the health standards have more of a crossover to PE, and there are some health standards that need to be a standalone. So, that part of it is just notably kind of funky and complex, and I would encourage questions about that in particular because it is a bit trickier to see transparently what do we have to do. To be really honest, we don't have a ton of have-to-do on the PE front from the state level, which then leaves a lot of local autonomy, with the exception of how we assign standards. We do have to make sure that it's an all-in-all, just like it is in the core content. So, there is a upcoming meeting that is on Monday afternoon. All of our teaching and learning folks, I think, are planning to be in attendance from that subcommittee. Anyone is welcome to attend at that point in time. At that time, the groups that have been working on recommendations will be sharing out their recommendations. We'll be doing that in a structure to allow them to get feedback. What is it that we've got right? What have we missed? Are there things we need to consider? They'll take those back to their work teams, all of that feedback, so that their work teams can say, okay, where are we at with regard to policy? Are there things that we would recommend shifting or changing moving forward so that as we come into having more formalized language, they've had that opportunity to hear from other stakeholders as well? And then, if the policy is updated, then it is already on the radar of our building administration at the high school to be thinking about what does then communication with families, parents look like, in particular, our families who are parents of students who would be grandfathered into one system and have students incoming into another system. That's a very particular set of understandings that they'll need to have and supports that they'll need to have on that front. So, there are some things there that will depend on timing in terms of when we intend to roll out or when policy is updated, but that is definitely on the radar, and it's already one of the things that we're considering, like what do those structures look like and where do we go from there? There's just a little bit of the waiting game right now to have a better sense of timeline and where we'll land. But, that is the very, very quick version of process that we've been through so far, some forward-facing process components, things that are sort of rules we don't have choice about that we have to get in place and some of the things that they've been considering. So, I will stand for questions.
Questions? Chrissy Swanson.
Thank you for that. That was very informative. A couple of questions for you, and tell me if this is more appropriate for Monday, but we've given out certificates of attendance and we've given out diplomas. I think certificate of attendance generally was more for special needs and so forth. Has that been considered in this, or is it something that we, they need to follow the new rules, or?
That's a great question. So, unless a student is under the umbrella of the alternative standards, which would be our extended standards, then the students would fall under the all-as-all rule subset. Each of the departments is very cognizant of what does that mean for populations. That's part of the meeting that we had with the special education department. Math, Jenny came from the math department specifically because that tends to be one of our biggest barriers for students, and lots of people have kind of a fear threshold on the math front. But, we don't right now, unless I'm misreading our policy, we don't have a certificate of attendance component of the policy per se. We have a graduation policy. That's what we would be talking about in terms of revision, and then I think there may be additional conversations in terms of extended standards. I don't know what you would say, Mr. Swanson, but...
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I would say is you are correct about the alternative standards, and we do have students that we, I'm sure we will continue to award certificates of attendance to. They're usually students who stay with us through 21 years of age and participate in transition programs and other opportunities to better prepare them to be a part of our community.
Thank you. I think we can anticipate a little bit, maybe a lot of pushback on that, not specifically aimed at us, but perhaps at the rule itself, the regulations. Will we need to examine more closely the courses that have been completed by students that might request early graduation before we've just done a credit count in what courses they've taken? And now, will we have to go back and look through and make sure that there was achievement in standards and so forth?
Yes. So, we would have to, we would want to, depending on how the policy is ultimately adopted, we would want to make sure that it's not only credit, but it's credit within those sub areas that we are proposing students get credit in. So, I'll use maybe social studies as an example right now, which after Monday, they may have shifts in what they're recommending. Right now, the recommendation would be that a student has a credit in U.S. Studies, a credit in World Studies, and a credit in civics. So, beyond having to attend to whether or not they have three credits, we would also want to track whether or not they've received credits in those subsections of content. As a reminder, in the current policy, and I mean, we may have a conversation about this, but if we maintain it, any student can essentially show competency. That's in our current policy right now, meaning that they don't have to take the course per se, but they have to evidence that they have competency in the content assigned to that course. So, we could have a student who requests early graduation who hasn't taken the course, but has demonstrated competency sort of as an exchange for that. And that usually goes through a process where they, where parents will submit documentation, and we review that through the lens of the department and all sorts of different things. I would anticipate processes like that would stay the same.
See, those are the kids, although the number is not great at all, but still, those are the ones. We receive a document with all the appropriate signatures, but I'm not aware that there's been any kind of standard count or anything like that in that document. Somebody will have to do that. I can't imagine that the parents will be, somebody in the district will have to do that. I can see some pushback in that as well for the people that are caught in the middle, you know, the grandfathered people, and will probably have to make some kind of allowance there. I also feel that, and I'll just say it, I think the state, somebody has missed the ball in terms of special ed students because we've always had an accommodation there that's allowed us a little more freedom with the graduation requirements for that particular group. However, as a principal, I remember where the most pushback came, and it came from the special ed group themselves wanting almost this exact thing, you know, being held accountable to what everybody else is. That was quite a shocker to me, but I don't know if we've crossed that line yet.
And I will maybe offer one clarification. So, ultimately, the requisite for access to standards and the inclusion in the district assessment system is not a direct equivalence to the grade for the course, if that makes sense. So, the weighting of the content, the distribution of the content, along with the how content is taught, is one of the things that may be variable from courses, where we would guarantee that all students have achieved similar outcomes, but the way that their grade works is where I think there have been some conversations in some of our departments already to say, okay, what does that mean for then how we negotiate the work of grading, which is related to then policy, but not necessarily the part that's delineated there. And we talked a bit today in the policy committee about the variations in grain size in terms of like, in policy, we are naming the biggest, the biggest rocks that are not negotiable. And then, when we get to the course catalog and the course approval process and the progressions, each of those other approval processes, that's where the grain sizes continue to funnel down and get smaller. And that then relates to grading because that falls, it is related to policy, but is not necessarily defined within policy for students. And so, there are crosswalks with standards, but they are not a one-to-one correlation, meaning that if a student failed a given standard, doesn't mean they failed the course, if that makes sense, because every course will include experiences in content and skills that aren't content standards that are beyond that defined content.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as Dr. Kness mentioned, we discussed this in committee, and we talked a little bit about the stakeholder group, but for the good of the board and whoever might be listening, would you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So, we have a group of folks who will be gathering together on Monday. There are members of your group coming to join that team, LCCC, UW. Mr. George is identifying and working to identify parents and students to serve in that capacity. We have representatives from every department at the high school who will be joining us. We've got the principals from the other buildings, facilitators, a large cross-section of folks to try and get a broad purview. Ultimately, it is not an exclusive group. The invitations were sent out to make sure that we had a broad perspective represented in the room, but all folks who come are very welcome to join in that. And that meeting has been communicated with all of the departments as well.
So, where and when will that meeting be held?
So, it is on Monday, the 7th, at Special Services in the Training Room from 3:30 to 5 o'clock.
So, all parents who might be listening?
Anybody who is interested in joining is very welcome to come and join. It will be sort of a roundtable format where folks will have an opportunity to sit with the representatives from each department, ask questions, offer feedback. They'll have a little form that they'll fill out at that time, but the goal is to give some sustained time to process and think and to ask questions directly of those folks who are coming with their recommendations.
I think that's important to be inclusive because there may be somebody who has a keen interest who, you know, the principal isn't aware of at this time. So, thank you for that. And I'm wondering, Dr. Goldheart, this seems like a pretty aggressive schedule to have first reading in November. Do you anticipate that that's realistic?
I mixed on that. We'll see where we are, and if we're not ready, we're not going to do it. But, my guess is it would probably be December.
Chrissy Stanton.
Thank you. You mentioned that there are health standards being added to PE.
There are health standards. There are crosswalks between the health standards and some of the fitness PE standards. So, part of the standards alignment, which is happening K-12, is to look at redundancies in standards, certification allowances, and in particular, PE and health have a subset of standards that kind of overlap with each other. Then, health has a set of standards that's very discrepant to health. There are particular social-emotional standards. There are standards that are around healthy decision-making that don't have the same crosswalk, and then the same for PE. So, there, if you thought of it like a Venn diagram, there's a little sliver there that's an overlap.
So, as everyone is aware, I'm already concerned that our elementary kids particularly aren't getting enough movement in their day. Will there need to be health curriculum involved in PE time?
There would not be, there may be health standards addressed during PE time, but that is only for those standards that are appropriately overlapped, if that makes sense. So the reason, I'll pick on K-8, but, so K-5 actually, last week just met. And they went through and they said, like, here's stuff we need to talk to each other about. How are we dealing with this subset of content? So that they can identify those places that are symbiotic between the standards, so it's not interrupting what students are doing. It may just be, like I said, a redundancy or an enhancement of something they're doing as a unit. So all of our elementary PE courses do a fitness unit. There are health standards that are specific to fitness. Those would be the places where it would crosswalk. It wouldn't be pushing health standards into PE in the K-5 structure. That, our middle school in particular, that's a bit different. So that team is meeting, if you were to look at our PD schedule, they're meeting every single day that we have PD, PE time available to reconcile what they do with those standards because the certification requirements also shift over time across the K-12 system. So we have a standalone health teacher at the high school, teachers. That makes it less tricky, sort of makes intuitive sense. Health goes with health teacher, PE goes with PE teacher. We do not at the middle school right now. So for them, it's probably the heaviest lift because they have to negotiate how it is that they reconcile. And for us at the elementary level, because that set of content is shared by multiple people, they have a conversation just to negotiate sort of where the ownership of the standard lies. But that's a collaborative negotiation to make sure that it isn't interrupting access points for students.
And thank you. And I remember when I came and sat in on the math team, the math staff, there were some concerns that changing the course progressions might not keep us in alignment with the YTOP schedule. So we might be meeting a standard, but the YTOP testing might come in earlier. What, sort of where's the thinking on that and trading a course progression that really works and gives flexibility to our students and our educators, aligns with having students prepared for the ACT, but may or may not align with the YTOP scheduling?
So that is a great question. The state has recently, the state board approved in August meeting, I think, the new blueprint for the YTOP. So one of the things for each of our departments to be able to now see and negotiate as new blueprints are updated is what that update looks like. Because one of the things I would offer as a reminder, which is true for all of us and is true for probably every stakeholder, when, when we think about making a change, we're thinking about that through the lens of the current reality. With the shifts in the standards, 70% of the content standards in multiple areas was eliminated, meaning that what the assessment load looks like is very different than what our current schema is. So if you were to go and look at the new blueprint for math, those things that, that we're sort of trying to reconcile, how would that look or feel different, don't exist in the new, the new assessment. Some of them do. And so there is a little bit, I think, as you heard in the conversation, having to sort of walk the walk. If this is the thing that we believe is best for students, we have to own that it's best for students and, and to reconcile what the implications then are for that of the assessment. But to be very honest, that's very hard to project at this time because we're using the schema of the current assessment to try and guess at that, and it will be substantively different in the new assessment.
So just after I asked that question, I kept thinking and listening. But, you know, if I were sitting at this board table, I would say that I would sacrifice adhering to the YTOP schedule in terms of, in favor of a course progression that really works well for teaching and might really help thoroughly prepare kids for the ACT. But we just went through a really rough year for our staff last year with needing to move people and I'm a little fried. What, what's it called? The, the education riffs? Thank you. And so I just am thinking about, you know, wanting to make these decisions now, but not having our teachers stressed in a couple of years. It's really hard not to be stressed about how your YTOP scores are coming back when we're having ongoing budget difficulties. So I just wanted to be mindful of that and not be like, oh, that's the obvious choice from this vantage point, and then have people be anxious about that as it unfolds.
And I, I think that is always a very, I always sort of tease people that we can say we don't care about the test, but that's not real because we have consequences. Like at the end of the day, even if I think the test has ridiculous things, there are consequences, so it's real. And it's, it's real for teachers all of the time. I think the, the thing I would offer is just to say with the shift in the blueprint, the number of shifts that we might have to be aware of or consider will look substantially different than they do right now. So what, what the teams have been tasked with is to choose the best possible progression through those lenses of teacher sustainability, students, make that recommendation. And then we will have to make subtle shifts and negotiations for things as, as we live reality, and we do our best to walk the middle line on what's needed to, to maintain sanity and, and to be achievable for students and to make sure that we have not made it impossible for them to achieve graduation. So, so the reality is ultimately, in a theoretical world, we don't care. In a real world, we do, but what we have to care about is a lot smaller than what it used to be, and that helps a lot with some of those tensions.
I was just going to add, I've, I've been on a state committee where we're looking a lot of state board rules. And one of the major recommendations that we've made is in that YTOP. It should match the content, not the grade. Because many times in math, just because you're a sophomore, it doesn't mean you're in algebra or in geometry. It should be based upon the course you are in, not the grade. And there's some folks at WDE that are a little feathered about it, but the majority of the group is in, in agreement. I'm hoping that that can move forward. And then another part, just quickly, Madam Chair, is that, you know, if, if a lot of this gets done and we're comfortable, because in November, this work session, I believe, is going to be set a lot of time for this very purpose. And if there is a consensus before the November meeting, you know, we'd be happy to forward it so that, my, my biggest concern is making sure we can get it done in time so the course catalog can be done in time for registration. I know Brian Lee's sitting back there going, okay, you've got this, this, and this. He's, I know he's already thought about it. And, and so we'll look at those as well.
Thank you. That was going to be my comment. We're already out of alignment on YTOP with especially math, so I'm glad to hear that there's some discussion about what kids have already learned in that.
Did you have a? Yep. So the, the joy that our high schools get is that they operate under multiple umbrellas of accountability, not from a accreditation perspective, but from a student outcomes perspective. So at the high school level, we have state requirements for graduation. We have requirements for accessing Hathaway monies. And we have requirements for accessing standards. Those are each defined through different sets of rules. So in PE, unlike other content areas, only two of those three sets of rules apply. So PE is not required in the state graduation standard requirements. PE is not required for Hathaway access, but PE is required in the standard set. So, so in that regard, when we think about the difference between sort of our elementary system, our middle school system, and the high school system, middle school and elementary don't have three sets of rules. But once students achieve, sort of get to the high school level, then we're trying to reconcile and find paths of opportunity that are, are cognizant of all three of those sets of complexity, not just one or another, with ultimately our, our largest accountability being graduation. And so that's why I said, when you think about graduation policy, that is the largest grain size. It's like, what would we be willing to say? You do not walk across the stage. You don't walk across the stage if you didn't pass it. It's not what defines what we offer to students. It's not what defines their course progression. It's not what defines opportunity. It's just the, the, the biggest threshold. And then after that, we go to the next threshold, and then we go to the next one. But this, this one is just that first one. It's, it's the one that says, we're willing to say you don't get that piece of paper if you didn't do this.
So then what we're saying here, that PE has to be required on all?
No. What we would have to decide is whether or not we want to choose to require it in, in the graduation requirements because that is our, our local autonomy. We don't have the choice to not offer it. We do not have the choice to not require students take it. We still have to require they have to take it. We just don't have to say you have to pass it to graduate. So it's, it's very complex when, when we get to the, the different layers of content. The, the only things that we're required to say you have to pass are the things that are defined in the Chapter 31 rules that we have from the state, and that is inclusive of some of the core content areas. But it is not inclusive of all 10 standards areas. But we must offer and require that students take courses in those sets. And that's where I said, each of these layers then becomes a sort of a layer on the onion. We've got graduation policy. Inside of that, we have the course offerings and catalog, the required progressions, the courses that we offer. Each of those is part of our rules, but they may not be the graduation rules. And that's the ongoing conversation that we're having.
Okay.
Overall, as a community at large, what are the things that we're saying? You don't, you don't get to walk across the stage if you didn't pass these things.
Madam Chair and Trustee Yaragon, as a local board, you do have the right to put in your policy that that's a required course. In fact, I'll recommend that we do, because I think it would be important for our students to have.
I guess I just didn't know.
Yeah.
If we had that in our policy board or not.
Yes.
And if that is forthcoming for us.
You can add as many layers as you want to. The state defines the minimum number of layers.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as a matter of process, we'll spend, I think, all of the work session in November on this. And would that be the best time for us to have those discussions about, we think we should, because right now, we currently require PE in health? Like, is that the best format for this board to have discussions about what we think we want to require for graduation?
If you have things that you would like to have considered, I would ask forsake of the staff who've invested lots and lots of hours in it. If you can share that or send that in some way in advance so they have time to process and think about that. I think one of the things that has proven to be incredibly challenging is how to reconcile having an open conversation and troubleshooting with also giving folks who are deeply impacted by the conversations, time to process, to respond, to think about what's offered. So if there's certain things that you feel really deeply should be considered, my ask would just be that they have a chance to consider that in advance of a public meeting so that there can be a more dynamic dialogue. I think if the question is posed for the very first time in that setting, it's really hard for the person who came on behalf of their department to be asked to speak on behalf of a full department in response.
So would the preference be to email you?
And I can send everyone on the board the same feedback forms too that are being presented in the public meeting so that if you have things that you, like, what did we miss? What do we need to further consider? Components of thinking that can go back to those teams, then they can have an opportunity to process and think about that in advance so that we can maybe have a more dynamic dialogue. I think the timing has proven just to be really tough every time, where in one way or another, you're in a gotcha or they're in a gotcha, or, so to try and troubleshoot that, I think, from my perspective, would be appreciated in, in honoring of the amount of time they've put in already to have time to think about that.
Does that seem like a workable solution?
Okay.
Perfect. Other questions? Comments? All right. Thank you.
Next up, strategic vision update review. Is that you, trustee Murphy? Justy Marshall?
Dr. Goldheart.
Who wants to take it?
I'll take it. So I, I don't think it's updated here. I'm sorry. I don't think it's attached here, but you should have received on Friday from Dr. Goldheart what is the most current version of the strategic vision. It now has our updated vision, mission, values that we've talked about at our board retreat in our last meeting. Some of the other changes that we've talked about at various times, we're now able to see, for example, every term or phrase that is defined in the glossary is now bolded in blue, I think, so that way. And there's a text box early in the document. So folks, oh, good, it's, it's up. So there's a text box early in the document that indicates, you know, if you see bold blue, that's because it's in the glossary. So folks will see, you know, if they run across a term they're not familiar with and it's bolded, they'll know that they can go find that definition. All of the updated goals are there. So that's, that's where it is. I will say, I did a fairly thorough review of this version and found just a kind, a few kind of, they feel a little bit nitpicky, but I also think this needs to be a very polished document. We have high expectations for our students. We don't want to put out a final version that has small errors. So in some cases, it's just consistency in how we refer to something, you know, a missing period here or there. So I've, I've gone through and I have a document ready to send to Dr. Goldheart and would just ask if you see anything, you know, let me know. Dr. Goldheart, knowing these might be pretty minor, when do you think, if we want to vote on this next week, if it's pretty minor revisions, when do you think we need to get that to two rev?
If I could get it by tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we could get it back. They have a really quick turnaround, especially now, because it's just the minor things that have to be fixed.
Okay. So I guess maybe the question for the boards tonight is, are there any major things that would really prevent us from voting on this next week? You know, I think at this point, we've seen it, we've seen all of the pieces of content separately, kind of multiple times, and now we're seeing it all pulled together. So if that raises anything different for you, seeing it pulled all together. Oh, I do want to mention just a couple of other changes, is you might notice the picture on the cover is different. In a previous version, there were just, it was also a graduation picture, and there were some hand signals that could be interpreted as, who knows what, but we thought best to go with something that doesn't have students with, you know, hand signals and that sort of thing. And what's wonderful is Dr. Goldheart went and found a graduation photo from Laramie High School, a graduation photo from Whiting High School, and a graduation photo from Rock River High School, so that all three high schools are represented in the document. And I really appreciate that, appreciated that. I thought that was a great, a great and important thing to do. So some of the pictures have changed a little bit.
Thank you. Just a comment. I think we have done a lot of work on this. I think the board did some brilliant work at our retreat on the vision and mission. And we have to remember that this is a living document. We can always come back and refine things as time goes on and we see a need for further work. And I especially thank you for your keen eye on this last version and getting all those nitpicky things, because I agree that it needs to be right. It needs to be a quality product. So thank you.
Is it, is it too late to throw in something of substance and not just spelling grammar? I just am reflecting on some of the conversations we've had on the board and some of what we're hearing from our lab school families. and some of what we're hearing from our lab school families around really treasuring the lab school because it creates a place for different learners, learners who have neurodivergence, maybe not yet gone through the formal diagnosis process, which I just want to add is very time consuming and very expensive. And so I started thinking about, you know, why do we need a special school to meet those needs? Those learners' needs should be met in all of our environments. And I'm just looking at the first goal here and thinking about dedicating time in PLCs to respond to student needs and develop new instructional strategies that can move all students forward on their learning progression, including increasing all of our educators' knowledge about neurodivergence. And then I brought that up, oops, Steve exited the room. Brought that up in our curriculum committee meeting earlier. And of course, Mr. Slimon has been thinking about this and is already looking at a program to bring into the district to help just broaden knowledge of, you know, how different learners need different spaces within every classroom. So I just was wondering if we could say something and make that explicit in the strategic vision. But Steve left the room. Do you want me to get more specific? Just.
I'm curious. Was it specifically in Goal 1? Is that where you're looking?
Specifically in Goal 1 because it's about learner-centered systems. Just being able to add a phrase down here on the bottom, how we will fulfill our commitment under dedicate time in PLCs, just to say explicitly to increase our educators' knowledge of neurodivergence, all of our educators. Because some kids get, you know, we're seeing now broadly, some people get diagnosed so late in life. And so if our educators can kind of recognize, okay, this kid is doing things a little differently and is going to need their needs to be met a little differently, even if they haven't been through the diagnosis process. Because that, the diagnosis process is a really high bar. So we might have a kid who's showing that, like, they're going to need a slightly different space within the classroom before they've accessed something like a 504 and an IEP. Or even if their needs for support might be, you know, when we talk about like things on a spectrum, we can think about how some people need a whole lot of support and those issues might be identified really early and evidently. Some people need a lot less support, but might also be sort of drowning in a traditional classroom. And those educators might think, for example, that this is a discipline issue. Or they might think, for example, that it's a work ethic issue when really it's a learning style. Or they might think, for example, that it's a mood and behavior issue when we're looking at someone who's got a sensory processing difference. We might see someone with dyslexia who gets labeled as like, doesn't like to read and acts out. So if, my hope would be that all of our educators, not just our special ed team, would have broader recognition and broader literacy around these issues and not have it be something that's cordoned off to kids who have a 504.
Just Trustee Marshall and Trustee Swanson.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, Dr. Goldheart, I wouldn't want to put something that would just be words on paper. I want there to really be the capacity to do that work. So I'm just wondering, Dr. Goldheart, if that's really an expectation that we can put for that PLC work? Or what your thoughts are about that?
It's something I know right now that Mr. Slimon is doing with our staffs. And there's not just awareness, but actual looking at the data, looking at the student, looking at what works best. And that is always going on as him is an advocate for our students. I'm not sure how I would word that in there. I just don't want to keep adding and then we don't get it done. Not to dismiss it, but I think it's something that it is happening. But that doesn't mean we can't do better. We can always do better.
Trustee Swanson.
One of the things that we ran into as we were working on board goals, and I offer it as a solution here. I think we have overarching goals, things that we want the district to achieve. There are some interventions that probably haven't even been invented yet that we may use within the next four or five years. And this could be one. There's no reason that we can't add it as an intervention that we used to reach a goal later because it already sounds like it might even be in progress.
When we were talking about this downstairs, Mr. Slimon did name a program that he's bringing in. And maybe Mr. Hardisty could speak to this a little bit. There was a comment about, you know, having had one day at the beginning of the school year where like a lot of this information was disseminated and a realization that it might be more accessible material if it's given throughout the year. That would mean our educators over two years, three years, four years would have consistent, more consistent exposure, gain more and more skills that can be incorporated into every classroom rather than sort of firehosed in the beginning of the year when there's so much going on today. Do I understand that correctly?
Madam Chair, Trustees. Yeah, we did speak downstairs in Teaching and Learning about a program called reframing behavior. And basically what that will allow for us to be able to do. Traditionally, we have provided one full day of training in de-escalation techniques at a tier one and tier two sort of level for all staff at the beginning of the school year in August or September. Per the policy that's in place, we've used crisis prevention intervention as, or the Crisis Prevention Institute as the program to provide that full day training. Reframing behavior would provide smaller chunks of training around de-escalation and behavior instruction for our staff. It might be able to provide that training in a 30-minute snippet in a staff meeting or on a PD day when there's additional time or even within, say, a PLC meeting or something like that as well. So that it's not just that one day training at the beginning of the year. It would be more training and reminder over the course of the year.
Mr. Slimon, can we put you on the spot since you walked back into the room?
He's running away.
I guess my comment was going to be, as somebody who's worked a lot on the goals 2, I wonder by asking Mr. Slimon if he feels like it's important to add that specific language or whether, like, what we're doing captures it and when we have updates on the strategic plan, we can have updates on that work. Did you hear the gist of what we're talking about?
Yeah, I heard it when we were in our committee session before. So I'm pretty comfortable understanding where the topic is coming from and what the purpose is. I think that, I appreciate this thought that, you know, we might only be able to address the needs of students in one type of school or a different type of school when, in my experience in all our schools, we do a pretty dynamic job of addressing student needs across the board. Again, part of that comes from going through that evaluation process and determining eligibility for having a disability and needing specialized instruction. That being said, I think, again, across the board, we're doing a much better job of working through multi-tiered systems of supports in our schools to create interventions to help students who are struggling in a variety, in a variety of ways. So I believe that the strategic plan, as it's currently written, addresses the needs of students and staff. I think that, again, the work that many staff members and students and individuals and community members put into this over the course of last year, above and beyond what was much far, much farther above and beyonder than whatever occurred with 2rev happened in our community to really enhance things and be more targeted and intentional in what we're saying and why we're, the why behind what we're saying in there, to address student needs and to help staff address student needs. Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. I'm hearing that as written, you feel comfortable that it encompasses that. Does that seem fair?
Yes, and if I continue to feel like, you know, really wanting something named in the strategic vision so that our educators have a better understanding of sort of how ADHD might show up and how to make, for example, differences between behavior issues versus learning issues, if that continues to arise around the community or we can bring it back into this living document, but.
Absolutely. I think it's good to remember it's a living document. And we've talked about, like, periodically, talking like every three months about, like, what are we doing on this goal? So that would be a great time to talk about what are we doing on that goal and to bring that up again. So I think we definitely want to, like, try this for a year and see what do we need to change and what needs to go away, what needs to be added.
Madam Chair, may I? I would just share that Trustee Stanton's concerns are not unheard or not attended to. We've actually been working, I've actually been working pretty closely with the UW Psych Department to provide, to basically push into health classes even, to do some specific work, not only with students but with teachers as well, as to how we address these different needs. Both mental health needs and just learning styles. We talked earlier today about multiple intelligences and learning styles a lot. And those are things that haven't gone away. They're still there. We have had, as I mentioned earlier, that we've had a pretty intensive focus on implementing curricular programs. And now that I really feel like we've got a good handle on those, even though we need to continue revisiting those with both current staff and especially with new staff, as to how we implement these programs, we also need to have an awareness of diverse student needs.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments on strategic vision? Next up is athletics activities overview. Ms. Burkhart or Mr. Wagner, who's going first? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rain, okay.
Now, Chair, Trustee. Yep, there we go. Not that you could never not hear me. I've never been told that before. Thanks for allowing us tonight the opportunity to talk about athletics and activities. This has been a topic that has been brought up multiple times with regards to budget cuts and different things like that. You've received a couple proposals on maybe a sport that should be cut or, you know, I believe two years ago you contemplated cutting meals for activities. And so that is not what tonight's discussion is about. There should be no vote needed next week. This is just the continuation of all of the topics that the Finance Committee was tasked with looking at and in finding efficiencies. And some of those efficiencies might result in cost savings. Some might just result in, you know, what it is, a good, true, honest efficiency on how to run our athletics and activities in our schools better. And so you can refer back to some of the recorded Finance Committee meetings to hear discussions with regards to fees, to the proposal of fees being charged for athletics and some different things like that. But tonight, what I would like the discussion to be surrounded around is allowing the athletic directors to talk to you about how their program, how they run their program. You know, how do they allocate the funds? They keep track of all the funds per sport. They allocate them and they run the show. And so I thought it would be beneficial for you to hear how those operations were so that way, if and when it ever came to the point of needing to make a decision of are we going to do something with athletic funding, then you could trust that you have all the information. You know all the information that we would be gathering, that we would be looking at. So you could trust in the decision that the operation side would make. You guys shouldn't have to make a decision of, we're going to cut meals for these sports. You know, your decision would be like, we're going to, we need to decrease our athletic and activity funding. And then the operation side starts having those discussions of how that should be done. And then we come back to you and say, this is what we are going to do. And you guys can have faith and trust us that we have done our due diligence to make the best decision possible that would benefit all students. And then, of course, you would kind of know what we're thinking so that way, when you got all the backlash from the community, you could, you know, say, I know this, you know, it doesn't seem fair, but I promise you that the best interest of all students was taken into consideration. Which, yes, usually means you have some people that fare well and some people that don't in that situation. So I would love for you just to have that open conversation with them on how they run their programs. And I will start us out a little bit with just letting you know, the model for FY '25 funded athletics and activities at $1.7 million, $1,726 or $26,614. And in the budget that you approved, you approved $1,866,992. That is a difference of $140,000, which sounds like a lot. But if you actually look at the crew report where it looks at all 48 districts and how their activities are spent, activity, athletic monies. Also, if you hear any business manager that ever stands up in front of the legislators to talk about this, they will tell you that it is grossly underfunded in the model. WHSA continues to add more and more opportunities for sports, which is great, but it comes at the expense of the district having to put forth more funding. The funding model does not increase with each extra sport that comes on or each extra referee that WHSA says, now you're going to pay referees this amount instead of this amount. You know, it is all dictated for us and on our behalf. And of course, you know, we'd love to offer everything, but sometimes it comes down to a decision of, well, really, can we afford to offer everything? Or what should we look at here? With the extra increase in salary of applying that across the board to all salaries with regards to the base, you will add another 56 potentially $1,000 on top of that. So then that would put you about $196,000 over the allotted amount, which is still good. Because in looking at the crew report, you'll see that there are only eight districts out of 48 that actually spend what the model allocates or a little bit under. All other 40 districts are above, well above, to the tune of $9.8 million. We only contributed to 120 of that back in '22. So like I said, we're doing really well with comparing what we're funding and what they are funding for athletics and activities. There is a mixed bag of, across the state, of who charges fees and who doesn't. And there's really only two districts outside of ours that offers all sports. So that's just a little bit of model funding and statewide numbers for you. So I will stop there and stand for questions and then ask Mr. Wagner to come up and talk about all the good stuff he knows and does.
Any questions specific to funding? Okay, thank you. Take it away, Mr. Wagner.
All right, is this thing on? Okay, it is. So I just, I just keep writing checks and buy everything until they tell me I'm out of money. That's what I get to do. No, in all seriousness, we didn't reinvent the wheel. We still have all the same spreadsheets Leslie put together, all the same spreadsheets that we've been using. The funding that I used, we stepped up our supplies and equipment for each sport. So everyone's getting a little bit more money, which, you know, in turn helps them buy equipment, buy supplies. Outside of that, we're still paying for meals. We've been afforded the flexibility currently of how we're being funded that, let's say, Coach Shebron takes the cross-country kids out and gets the. out and gets them a meal after competing, and they're over by $17. Instead of going after their club accounts, which we've had to do in the past, and ask them to offset that difference, in most cases, I'm just covering that. Leslie also is currently, she's amazing, she currently is tracking how much each trip they should spend in meals. And so an example of that would be, state tennis was this last weekend. The team went over by $397 for their allotment, but they were under for the year by 462. So we just covered the overage because it made sense, because they didn't spend that money earlier. It should have been spent. It wasn't, so it was easy to forgive. Now, in the past, we would have went and got that $397 from their fundraising, fundraised money. So I feel like we're, we're trying to, we're doing two good things, right? We're, we're taking care of the kids, but at the same time also, we're taking care of them on the backend, where that, where that money really should be used for equipment or things to help improve the program or the experience for the student. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. We were, we, we, in the old model, in the old spreadsheets, there was just an arbitrary number. So let's say Nordic Ski gets $6,000 for travel, they would always be over. So when we set up all of our travel budgets for every sport, we went ahead and went, what are they historically using? Let's use a number that makes sense, right? So that's how we assigned those monies. We did not encumber every single penny because that would be silly, right? I also like to be able to say yes to, to coaches when we need to buy stuff. So a little bit with that money, I don't want to say it's discretionary money because it's not. We're, we're using it for shortages. We're using it for facility rentage at rental at the University of Wyoming at times. But that money then is, is able to, to benefit across. And, and we can help things if we need to buy emergency equipment, if we need to cover some uniforms, if we had something happen and stuff got damaged, we can use that money for that too. So we're really not, we're always spending out of need, as was asked of us. We're not really addressing too many wants. We're using the fundraising committee and the rec mail grant to, to do some of the wants. So I think, yeah, that's what we do. I, I just would love to, to answer any questions you might have.
Justine Marshall.
Thank you. Just a question. In the past, I know there was a per student, per meal amount that you used. Is that still how you figure out what teams get for meals?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly. So we still do the first meal out policy. So they pay for their first meal out. And then it's $12 per student per day, which is not good. But our coaches do a phenomenal job of, of making it work.
And I don't remember the exact word you used, but if they use their whole budget, then you tap into?
Their club account.
Their club account. So is that something they approve of? I mean, do you?
Yes, they know. Yes, they know the policy of. And so sometimes, a lot of times, if, if they have a booster, not everybody has a booster club, but if they have a booster club, many times they'll go over and the booster club will basically put a check, you know, submit a check for their club account, and then we take it out of that. So that's kind of how we've done that.
So what if the sport doesn't have a booster club?
All of them have club accounts. It doesn't matter if they have a booster club or not, but those ones that don't have booster clubs are, are usually organizations that are comfortable doing the fundraising themselves. And so they, they don't have a need to use a booster club that way. Yeah.
Justine Stanton.
Do we have any idea if, what else those club monies are spent on?
Always.
Just, could you just, for example, loosely, like if a booster club doesn't spend to cover overages, or what are those expenditures? What are the needs that are not being met for athletics by the district is what I'm asking?
Sure. So not necessarily a lack of being able to provide something, but maybe t-shirts. Things, I will not purchase things that kids get to keep most of the time because it's the school's money. And so it's the program's money. So those kinds of things, things like socks. I'm, I'm not going to buy socks for teams. Or swimsuits since tomorrow is here. It's a little personal. We, I don't think anybody wants to wear a used swimsuit. So some of those things we don't cover. So that's where those clubs might come in. I would tell you that probably the, the large function of, of those club accounts is to offset the cost in meals.
Really quick, I will just add that when we talk about Fund 81, your student activity accounts, those are the club accounts that he's talking about. You don't approve the booster club financials or checks being wrote for us, but you do approve the student activity checks. Now, do you have a report that says Hotel 8 was for, you know, this club and this was for this club? No, it doesn't go into that detail. But you do see the individual expenses and then the total in Fund 81 and the bill list that you approved.
Justine, go, sir.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Wagner, I think you have talked about this with us on the numerous times we've talked.
Sure.
About the budgets. Can you refresh my memory, how many schools or is the great majority of schools, do they provide meals for the athletes? Is it something similar to what we do?
I, I would say that most are set up with a, a setup of a breakfast allotment, a lunch allotment, and a dinner allotment. But it, you could do that a million different ways. I, I don't know how many people are paying. Some, it, it varies per district. Some districts will only pay at culminating events, so things like regionals and conference and then state. And they'll just cover all of them with the guidance of, of whatever that daily allotment is going to be. Some schools have went to, when budgets got tight, it was probably 10 years ago, nine years ago, everyone was talking about cuts. That was something that like Converse County, when I was teaching there at that time, that's what they did. They cut the meals. That was the quickest way to save the money that they needed to. So, and then some pay for everything the whole time that they're out. So it just kind of depends on, on the district. But I would say, as far as our policy, it's unique to just have $12 for a whole day to feed a kid. When they can't even, yeah. So it would, it would be great to do more, but even at that, at that amount, historically, we're in the $80,000 range for food.
So then these schools, how do they make that up? Is that all made up through their booster club? You know, do they have more, you know, funding through the booster club? I'm assuming that they have less sports is some of that, you know?
It's a big part of it.
Contributing that much to the overage, they, and they're covering a full amount of those meals. There's got to be some offset there.
Yeah, I think, so for me, when they did that, and I was coaching soccer at the time, I had parents come up and write me $1,000 checks to feed the girls while we were out. So I think there is a, a, a part of that. But I would also say, yeah, not offering everything is certainly the way that is. Because when I look at Neutrona County, which Kelly Walsh and Neutrona High School offer everything, and then Cody High School, they have a, everything's set in place, but they have to offset meals somehow. They have to kind of like what we do. They have a policy, but then most of their boosters make up the rest of that.
Thank you.
Justine Erika, then Justine Stanton.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I appreciate all the information. In terms of numbers, I'm just curious, in terms of numbers, what would you say would be the most, highest participation of students in terms of athletics? Like what sport would, has the highest numbers?
It's hard. Volleyball, we, I think we had over 70 kids try out for volleyball. Football, we're in the mid 70s. Basketball, generally on the men's side, we'll have 50 to 60 kids try out. Girls' basketball is a little lower, 30 to 40. Girls' swim is in that 30 to 40 range. Yeah. Boys is in the 20 to 30 range. Track, track's probably our biggest team. Outdoor track, well, indoor track is, is fairly large as well. So those are probably our largest. Wrestling, we're in the 30 to 40 range.
I see.
But throughout the whole year, it's definitely the track teams and, and counting kids more than once will, will service over 900 athletes this year.
Wow, that's amazing numbers. Thank you. And what would be the least, least numbers of participating in the athletic?
Alpine Ski.
Alpine Ski. And which would be the most expensive of all the sports?
Alpine Ski.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of Alpine Ski team, could you give us just a brief update on, on the hiring?
Yep, we're interviewing on Tuesday.
Oh, wonderful. How many candidates?
Yeah, we're not going to talk about how many candidates.
Oh, okay. All right.
Justine Stanton, did you have a question?
I did. I had some questions back for Ms. Green, so I don't know if we want to stick with Mr. Wagner until he's finished.
I think you can go ahead. We can just have a discussion.
Okay. And, and thank you, Mr. Wagner.
You can sit down if you want. I don't know how long it's going to take.
Oh, I'm fine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wagner. I guess I'm just sitting with a few sort of concerns around, around how this process rolls out. And of course, we don't want to be a board that is micromanaging. That's not our job. And yet we sit with this tension of we are representing our constituents, we're representing the community. So if, if we look at the budget, and thank you, that was a, a better explanation than I had understood before around, you know, if we add things to sports, we're not adding in our funding model. So that did help me understand that. But if we are completely hands off and say, we've got to take 10 grand out of the athletics budget, make it happen, but we're not part of that decision, and it comes back to us as this is what we are doing. We don't really have time to hear our constituents' concerns, learn about those communities. Alpine Ski, for example, when it first came up, I had a lot of ideas about what that would be. And then the community came in here and really told us who these kids are. And we really learned quite a lot about the value that that activity has for this group of kids, and also about what that community is doing for their own fundraising, which is substantial. So I guess I just am sitting with this tension around wanting to allow you all as, as diligent, capable and caring people that you are, but not just be completely hands off when we're sitting here specifically to represent our constituents.
Madam Chair, trustee, fair, fair, definitely. A good, a question. And that is not what I meant at all. I'm just trying to help guide the, the lanes of governance and operational. And so I don't want you guys to get caught in the operational side of things and, and move out of that governance. You would always be part of these discussions. Should it consist of we're cutting the line item of meals? No, that's an operational thing. Should it consist of, okay, we need to cut funding? Can we hear what we think the best ways to go about that would be? So you say, you know, within the budget, I think we need to decrease that. We would go and have our, our conversations and come back and report to you. I'm, I'm guessing in, in something exactly like this and say, okay, here's the options that we're proposing based on this, 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 and this. And so you would still have a vote, but on the governance side, not so much of we're going to cut this line item and we're going to cut this. It would be more of, you know, here's a couple of options and, and here's what we could live with, here's what we would look at, you know? We would never just say, you know, this is what we did, we explained it to you, trust us. You know, that's not what I, I, I want at all. You know, we all need to be a working team. But you shouldn't have to vote on so many of the operational things. You should vote on a governance thing, task us with figuring out the operational side of it, and we come back to you so you can make a final decision on, okay, if the choice comes down to between cutting sports or cutting travel budgets or offering, or, or charging, you know, which one of those would you prefer to be the option for the cost savings measure? Does that work and help?
I think it's, I appreciate that. I think it's always a tension that this board is going to feel. And I talk a lot about staying in our lane. And that, I think it's just a matter of constantly checking ourselves to make sure, is this operational, is it governance, and working with our great, I mean, folks to figure out. So I think it's a great question and something we just need to like, as we go forward, be mindful of and sort of figure out. Justine, Erika.
Yes, I have a follow-up question to that, Ms. Green. Is there a possibility, and I don't know if it's, it's even a consideration, that some of the largest sports may be capping the participation of how many students travel in terms of cost savings? Like, I don't know, volleyball, football, and basketball and track. Would there ever be a consideration of capping the amount of student participation in each of these large sports?
Madam Chair, trustee, I would, there's always options to everything. Without knowing what situation we are in at that time, I, you know, I, I don't know if that would be a consideration or not. It, it could possibly be, that would be something that you would be all informed of, of everything that we considered. And as to why we did or did not feel, it would be in the best interest of all students.
Trustee Erika, and I would also add, we'd go to the expert, Ron Wagner, if it was the high school and the particular coaches, and have that discussion too. Because we don't want to make a decision out of isolation. And I've, I've come to like have great respect and trust for what Ron does. And he doesn't keep me worried because I know it's going to be done well. I know it. He just does it.
I appreciate that. We could. I was more worried about capping transportation to, to games due to transportation issues. From a budgetary standpoint, at $12 a kid per day, we're not really spending a lot in food. If it's a football team, we may not even be buying them a meal, period. So there really is no more cost. We're going to need two buses. We're going to need the Suburban to pull all the equipment. That, the numbers doesn't change that. And if we start limiting that, we start ruining experiences. And then why am I going to practice if I'm never going to get to travel? So I, I, I think that would be something. Would we potentially have to? Yeah. I, I would see us just doing more cuts from the beginning and cutting team sizes down to what we're willing to travel, what we can afford to travel versus pulling kids along that are never going to get the opportunity to compete and, and we're just toying with them at that point.
Mr. Wagner, I have a couple of questions. I'm just curious, we've talked a lot about like replacement of big items like Chromebooks. And I'm mindful of things that are really expensive, like football helmets. And I'm just curious, and I, I know through like some of the committees, we funded some of that. I'm just curious if we have plans in place for like annual replacement of really expensive equipment and gear.
Yeah, unfortunately, like you would like to, but there's a shelf life on those things like helmets. And so that's just probably a $20,000 purchase every 10 years. I'm covering all the reconditioning that we do every year. We make sure we do that to keep everything up and going. Things like track mats, which the rec mail board approved, that's $60,000. Like, but the ones we're replacing are 30 years old. So these things that are very expensive generally have a good shelf life to them. It just stinks when they come up. It's like when you have to buy a car, right? Like, the car was good. It cost a lot. I paid it off. It was free. Now it's broken. I need a new one. Like, it sucks when that happens, but that's what you do. And that's what we do with that equipment. So it, you know, we, we buy things, we buy the big things, and then we try to maintain them and take care of them.
I guess my question too is like, is that something in like the, I know we talked about like, I can't remember what we're calling the budget.
It's in your special reserve.
Okay.
So in the million that you moved out of your FY24 remaining monies, that went for the, for the purpose of technology equipment, sports equipment, school facility, or maintenance, all sorts of different stuff. But yes, your athletic equipment, it, it goes towards that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, my last question is, we're, we've talked a lot about cuts, and I hope we're like getting to this place where we're not talking about cuts, and we're talking about what, what could we add. Where do you feel like we're lacking most in funding for sports at high school?
That's a great question. I, I think every community is different in what they want out of their athletics and their athletics. That's a great question. I, I think every community is different in what they want out of their athletics and their activities, right? And I think if, if we are happy, and it appears that I think most people are happy with where we are right now, with what we offer. The funding is working currently. You know, I, we're, we're talking about, you know, girls, girls wrestling is growing. And so we want to grow that program here as well. That's going to increase, as Ms. Green said. And I'll probably put it less eloquently. The WHSA keeps writing checks out of our checkbook, and I'm on that board. I'm very aware. But at the same time, it's about the experience for the kids, right, and the opportunities for the kids. So, you know, as much as we would like these things to be free and be able to offer and never worry about it, it's, it's just a necessary evil to have to worry about funding these, these great opportunities for the kids. So right now, things are very good. I get to be the yes man more than the no man. We get to get the kids some really great opportunities. We get to give them good equipment. I feel like all of our programs are moving in the right direction. You know, so I, I don't have a long list of money or a long list of needs. And I, and I do that saying that hopefully down the road, when I do, it's taken seriously versus Ron is just always here asking for money, so.
And the school board is working really well, I'd like to add.
Well, that on it.
Thank you. Yes, yes, it's, Mr. Wilkinson and I were talking about that. I said, that is one piece of anxiety I currently don't have anymore, which is probably adding years back onto my life, so.
And I know Ms. Burkert is also going to talk with us, right? Any other questions for Mr. Wagner? Yes, Trustee Sorenson.
Been over here holding it in, but I'm going to be a little unpopular in that I hope at the earliest convenience, we're able to take a look at our meal situation. And I know that one side of the argument is that people who choose to be in activities choose the extra amount of monies that it costs for their kids to participate. I get all that. But I think we lose track of the older kids who are keenly aware of their family's socioeconomic background. And when they have to provide the first meal out for literally every contest, football would be one. Almost every contest, you probably hardly ever pay for a meal for football unless it's, unless it's in the playoffs. The rest all are, and that adds up because, one, it's not a meal that they would have provided at home for dollars and cents. It's, it's at a restaurant, and there's tips involved and et cetera, et cetera. Or it's pulling into a gas station and eating Slim Jims and whatever's available, okay? All those things happen, and we've kind of caused that to happen with our cap on spending. So I guess what I'm saying is that the earliest possible convenience, that we take a look at how much we charge or how many meals we pay for and try to fix that. I think we might find that we get quite a few more kids out. And I know that the pat answer, because I used to say it, we always pay for kids if we know they can't afford it. I suspect you don't know all the kids that can't afford it. My own kid has paid for other people's meals because he knew, but the coach didn't know. I didn't know. I don't know if their parents knew. They just sent him on the bus to go to Gillette. Anyway, so I think that's one thing that I would like to see fixed in our activities and athletics, because it's not just athletics. It should be a policy that's all the way through activities, which means the choir kids are going through the same thing, but band, et cetera. They're all paying those first meals out, and sometimes those first meals out can be pretty expensive or nutritionally devalued to the point that I wish we weren't even spending the money on it.
Yeah, I, I would, yeah, we do try to cover the ones that can't afford it. A lot of our boosters, again, will provide that first meal out. So it counts as their first meal out, but they're eating sandwiches and granola bars and fruit and all that kind of stuff. It's, again, better for them than, than a stop at a gas station. But I would, I would definitely make everyone aware, yes, the meal policy is what it is, but it does carry through to FFA, Pearl Star, DECA, band, choir, orchestra. It's not just the sports. And the proposed cutting of that, when I, I said we would save around $45,000, that real number, not taking into account free and reduced, is closer to $80,000 just for sports. And it's going to be probably something very similar for our activities and athletics. So to, to raise that $12 and ask me to, to pay a higher amount, it's going to take a big check.
Any other questions before we, yes?
Just one more comment. Thank you, Trustee Sorenson. I think you said that so eloquently. And I would say the same thing about charging fees for participation. And I certainly hope we don't go back to that. I think it's been, I don't know where you're around when we discontinued that 10 years ago. And there was a very robust outpouring, and there were several board members, not me, but several, who were very adamant that we need to be providing those opportunities for all, all students. And as Trustee Sorenson pointed out, there will be students who would not even think about asking for help from the school or help from their families because they know what the situations are. So I certainly hope we don't ever go back to taking away those opportunities. And as you've said so many times, opportunities and the experiences that those students are able to participate in.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, I sent, and hopefully Ms. Green sent it on. I did a little bit of quick research last week on school districts that do charge. One that you'll find on there that's a little odd is Jackson Hole. They have plenty of money, but they also have to pay their workers $40 an hour to get any help. And so they have to charge so they can at least pay their workers. So in most cases, I, there were very few that went, well, we don't really collect enough, so we don't do anything with it. Most of it is to pay for the helpers or to do those kinds of things, so, or pay for meals, right?
Any final questions for Mr. Wagner? Yes?
I just, I just wanted to toss an idea out there, you know. Slade has the annual Walkathon. They're raising quite a bit of money to distribute among their teachers for whatever they need. And I know there's so much support in our community for athletics. I can't help but wonder about doing some sort of a fundraiser for a general fund for athletics to help offset fees, offset meals, make sure that, you know, all the teams have that kind of support. Because I, I think you're right, we don't always know about the needs. But there's so much support in this community. I know families would love to help if they, if they knew of the need.
We're going to be quick with our last comments because we still have Ms. Burkert.
Well, you know, my comment was right along with what Trustee Siegel Stanton was bringing up, was a brainstorming, being creative about what we can do with our athletics to ramp up the budget fundraising. But I also wanted, so thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. I really appreciate everything you do for athletics and, and everything you do for the students, giving them an optimal experience in, in athletics and making them feel like there's a sense of belonging in the community. So we talk about sports and competition, but I also understand that it's sports and community. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Tristan, I'm wondering, is there like a federal grant or a state grant where we could petition to have more funding for athletics in our school district? And possibly, I don't know, maybe the model that we use petition, the joint, the JAC to, to offer us a little bit more money as our sports are growing and make the argument that it's not about competition, but it's about community and student experience.
Please feel free to join me in any session that we're allowed to testify in starting January 10th through March. That is definitely, you know, I, I spend a lot of time there during session. I would welcome anybody to join me, and we go up and provide that public testimony. I quite honestly think that they are all tired of hearing from business managers because we're the money people, and we're just like, give us more, give us more, give us more. And so I know, like, I enlisted Dave and Kate one time, sorry, Dr. Kniss and Mr. Hartezy, to speak at a JEC and, at a Joint Education Committee meeting, and they did a phenomenal job. And I think everybody really appreciated what they had to offer. So I think that talking to your legislators, you know, in public comment during session is definitely the best way to get everybody's attention and really explain, you know, what, what we're up against and what we're dealing with. And it would be probably more well-received than coming from me, yet another business manager, asking for more money. You know, you can, out, state grants, no, there's no state grant. I have not looked into any athletic federal grant. I've not heard of any, but that doesn't mean they're not out there.
Did you have something, Trustee Sorenson?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. It would really help, and I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, and I do not want to interfere with your day-to-day operations in any way, shape, or form. But it would be really helpful when we have to make the final decisions. How much have we saved by eliminating first meal out? Could we know that number at some time? Two, what would it cost us to go to $20 a day? I, I have no idea how to come up with that. I, I think $12 is, is way inadequate. It was that way when I was doing your job. I can't imagine what it's like in the post-COVID world, trying to feed kids two, two meals at least, maybe three, on a Saturday on $12 a day. I know how they try to do it, but I don't know how they do it.
Yeah. So as far as knowing what we're saving by not paying for, or, or paying for the first meal out, it really, I don't know that it would change right now the way we have, the way we have the understanding of it going. It's just $12. So that could be for one meal, it could be for two meals, it could be for three meals. So I'm not sure if I could, I could come up with that number, but I have talked with Leslie about, it's pretty easy to look at what we spent, and then you take that number and you start figuring out, how many meals did we buy? All right, let's add $8 to every one of those meals. And then, I mean, she could probably figure that out, what, what that would be, and I'm sure it would. I mean, at $12, that's 66% of the original. So, you know, you could really almost just double what we spend now, and that would be what we'd have to pay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wagner?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Burkert, thanks for sticking with us.
Well, thanks, Madam Chair and Trustees. Middle school is definitely a different beast. We don't pay a lot of meals. Probably our biggest fees come from officiating and then just coach salaries. But again, our biggest problems are good problems. We have lots of kids out for lots of things. And so your question about number of athletes, track is by far our biggest. We're sitting at like 190 last year. Yeah, and so our numbers are quite inflated. They're huge. Cross country right now is 117 out running. And so when we have that safety and supervision issue, especially with middle schoolers, we talk Nordic ski, and they're out in the dark, trees, moose, all of the other things. We do look at needing to add probably another coach here or there, and we try really hard. Mr. McGurven and I share that responsibility. We talk about numbers. We talk about safety. We also talk about being financially responsible and being really careful with our coaching staff and collaborating with them. And can we really do what we have with what we have, or do we need to request for more? And so that's kind of our decision-making parts. Probably our biggest concern right now is in shared sports with other schools in our town where we've added another 30 students to our building. And so when we, we look at spaces for that, we look at kids out for the LMS at this point in time, sports, it definitely is creating just gym space, uniform numbers, numbers of balls that are available, all of those different pieces of our puzzle. So again, like, places where we really could use additional assistance would be in the officiating fees. We try to honor what might be like a sophomore or freshman level officiating fee, but sometimes we have officials associations we deal with that those officials want the junior varsity pay, and we don't have another officials association to use for that. And so making sure that we can find quality people, we can host the events that we have are definitely important to us. But also space for practices, space for contests, and we work as best as we can for collaboration between the high school and us. But when we have a track at D-Tai Stadium and, or Lermi Athletic Field, and we have 190 students spread all over, like, we have a space issue. If we have 90 out, or even half of that per grade level for volleyball or basketball, we have like 48 out for volleyball right now, even two gyms is rough. And then shipping out of your building is not building a community, so that's another rough place. And so trying to do everything we can to negotiate keeping students in our building, keeping our times manageable for middle school age students. And so we're looking at possible solutions. Capping maybe has to come in. Grade levels that may be involved, lottery signups, I, we don't really know. Very thankful at this point for transportation, trying to fit 190 kids on X many buses with drivers and, and getting us to and from places. But definitely looking at just some of those obstacles for us. The rec grant has been amazing, and so we anticipate putting it in for pole vault equipment, things that needs to be safe. And so that's kind of one of our top go-tos and possibly a timing system for the middle school for this year. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, Madam Chair. Um, I think one of the things that we're just also kind of missing on the other side of the story and the picture that a lot of the sports bring to our communities is an economic boost, especially if you have like, are hosting a tour or you're hosting other, other schools. I mean, it boosts the local economy with hotels and restaurants and, you know, I mean, even if the kids are spending, you know, their $12 on french fries, we still, you know, they're, they, we still get a lot of out-of-state, out-of-community money and possibly also out-of-state money, because I know track and field go, they go to Colorado and sometimes regional track and field come to Wyoming to run. Another thing I just want to highlight is just to speak of the, the natural environment that we live in and the opportunity that we have for, you know, high altitude running and Alpine ski and cross country. And we're just really taking advantage of, of, of the, you know, the larger state economic tourism and industry of, you know, of how we sell Wyoming and how Wyoming looks to the, to the outer world, right? So I think there's a lot of really great things that high school sports bring to our local community and statewide. So thank you.
Ms. Burkert, I have a question. Um, so it seems like at the middle school, there is some funding, it sounds like, with officiating fees, but it's more like a logistics and a space issue. And I just always hate to think about capping because I just am a firm believer that kids find their place in athletics and activities sometimes. And I'm really impressed with how many things are offered at the middle school. And so I'm just wondering your thoughts on, and maybe you don't, maybe you don't have to answer this right now, but I think that this board would love to hear sort of as you go through those, if there's other things that are not just officiating fees, but things that we could help with, but finding space or figuring out, again, being creative. I, I think we'd be interested in hearing what solutions you guys might have, sort of capping students, which I know you don't want to do either.
We can definitely brainstorm, get you kind of a list. But I do know that you did do a little bit of helping for some wrestling, girls wrestling coming on board. And so we really appreciate that and LHS working with us. So that's like our 10th sport. We have nine before this year. So girls wrestling will be 10, and just finding a place, especially in the busiest season. So November starts for the high school, all their basketball, their wrestling, their indoor track, their boys swimming, as well as all of our boys' basketball, now a girls' wrestling. And so we start finding places where we are running out of places and times and space.
Really excited about girls' wrestling, and then it was like, well, that's during high school wrestling. Like, where do you, where do you put those kids? And so it feels like we need more gym spaces and more track space, but, yeah, like, please help us continue that conversation aside from just money. Yes, Trustee Sorenson?
I just want to hand it to you and all of the coaches at the middle school. It just really warms my heart to see this. It just really warms my heart to see this level of participation and that speaks to the quality of staffing, the quality of coaching, the quality of the environment in the middle school that kids are this enthusiastic and participating at this rate. So thank you.
If you ever get a chance, trustees, on a Saturday when they're having one of their meets at Scout Park and folding over into their area, it is quite a sight. There's some members of my HOA that get all excited on that Saturday because of the parking.
That's this Saturday, by the way.
As you've heard, they know where I live now and so I hear from them. But it's incredible at how many kids are there. I mean, it's a massive group. And Ms. Burkhardt and Mr. McGurven are out there the night before in the dark with their little flashlights, putting the cones up and putting all the spots to make sure. And it's phenomenal. And I really appreciate those two because they're being assistant principals, helping with that side of things is a full-time job in itself. And then on top of that, they're doing this athletic side. And they are phenomenal individuals and I really appreciate them.
Thank you. We definitely do it with a great team, right? But it is this Saturday, so maybe everybody needs to make note of that. But yeah, we have, we have teams coming with three or four athletes possibly, but from Fort Waschikie, from Sheridan, and then all of the area kind of from Casper down to us.
trustee Sorenson, did you have a comment?
I just simply would say that I've had three kids go through the middle school and junior high programs and I would say that you're pretty close to 100% as a feeder program for the kids that are involved in your activities, carry through to the high school and perform at an incredible level. And you are, you and your school are to be commended for that. They're happy athletes and they, they're well-behaved, they have great grades, they do good things. Thank you.
I just had one other comment and that was that, I also think it's important that, like you're offering cross country to sixth graders. And I think a lot about how for kids coming into the middle school, it's really intimidating. And that provides a really good outlet for kids to meet other students before school starts and to have a community. And it's a really, really great program that is really inclusive of a lot of kids, whether they've ever run before or not. And so I appreciate sort of the attention to finding a spot for sixth graders when they're first coming into the middle school also.
Any other comments, questions for Ms. Burkhardt? Thank you. Next up is board meeting review, draft agenda, and that should be in board docs. Any questions about the agenda for next week? Yes? Oh, yeah. Okay. Nothing on next meeting? Policy review is next. I don't think we have anything for policy review, do we, to discuss tonight?
Just what we discussed in our policy committee meeting.
Okay. So we'll have a few policies next week for first reading that you can see in the agenda. And then next is looking forward, comments on items for review discussion going forward. Trustee Sam.
Yeah, just thinking about the RIFs that we went through last year and just hearing from people out in the community campaigning. It just, it was a tough year last year and I think we made some remarkable changes in the district and our position to move forward with health into a stronger district. But I am concerned about just how things are going out there for people. I know a lot of people were moved, we had to fill gaps, we had to combine some things. And I know that all of our teachers and all of our staff do this because it's a gift and a passion that they have to offer all of our students. And I'm wondering just a little bit about how we might find out from our staff how they're doing, especially if they've been moved or reassigned. Will there be any process for people to give feedback or to give voice to saying, you know, I'd really like to get back to this or that? And to communicate with our staff a little bit, like, did we do the job or is this going to happen again in January? I think people are feeling a little anxious and skittish out there and wondering if these types of massive checkerboard moves will occur yearly or how can we just communicate some stability to our folks?
First of all, I think that's a great question. I think we certainly could build a survey for folks. I mean, that's the first thing that always comes to my mind is a survey. I don't, I also am cognizant of the fact that sometimes I think we out-survey, we over-survey people sometimes too, and I don't want to do that. But at the same time, I do think that that's important. We're very familiar in human resources now with our Qualtrics platform, so we can, we can use that to do some kind of a survey to gauge where people are. But I agree, it was stressful last year and I think that, I feel that stress from people pretty regularly. I've made it a point to go to every school and talk to every staff, including transportation, to sort of give them a rundown of where we are. We've talked about the parental rights policy because I think that's another point of concern for a lot of people as well. And just been available to ask questions. But I think we need to be very cognizant of our staff and our staff morale. You know, I've been around to a lot of places now, I've met with a lot of people. I hope people feel comfortable that they can come and talk to me about things and that I'll be honest with them. But I do think we need to do more for our staff to help to assure them that, of where we are and to communicate out where we are as a district with them. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I wonder if people feel comfortable or how we can encourage people to feel comfortable saying, like, you know, I was, I've been moved over here and I'm doing it for the team, but I really, like, this is my passion, I really want to be over here. Because I think people are nervous, like, will there be another round of RIFs? If they speak to, you know, a wish to be in a different position, will that make them vulnerable to the next round of RIFs? So I think, you know, as we get clarity on, you know, we did the big thing, there's not another big thing coming. I hope that's true and the recent effort by the education committee sounds positive. But yeah, I just, I wonder if people feel comfortable saying, I was moved over here and I'd really like to be back over there without feeling fear of being in line for the next round of RIFs.
They wouldn't be in the next round of RIFs and it just depends on if that position's available. Because some of those positions were eliminated and if they go back, there's not a position to go back to. I just want to remind the trustees that the ECA that was presented to the JEC last week, as you know, has to go through multiple steps and we don't know what'll happen to it. And then remember, if they're looking at that 8% on the salary side, they're adding that to their formula of $39,000 per teacher, because that's what the formula is. So that doesn't always equate to, we'll have an 8% increase for everybody because we got that, because it's already starting at that really low level. And to continue our goal of wanting to add that additional $2,500 and $2 an hour, that is going to require us to make some decisions about where's that approximately, what about $3 million to do that will come from, because we want to do that. Let's hope they're generous across my fingers, but I have to see it to believe it.
Just, I'm sorry. Could we say prudent instead of generous? It's not a Christmas gift. They, this is their constitutional duty to fund education adequately.
It definitely is.
Justice Marshall.
Thank you. Just conscious that this is something for future discussion, I would like to hear from Mr. Calvert sometime, where we are. You know, you mentioned going out and telling employees where we are. So at some time in the future, if we could talk about that, where we are, as Dr. Goldhart was just talking about, where are we with RIFs and staffing and that sort of thing? So at some point, if we could get that update, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I guess I don't know that we can have that update until we know if we have an ECA, correct? I feel like we're in this holding pattern of not knowing.
Madam Chair, trustees, you're absolutely correct. Like there is unfortunately a lot of months between now and that final decision, which has a huge impact on what we will and won't be able to do and to what extent it would come, you know, at what cost. You know, there is also, Lermi One is changing the way that they are, their benefit package, their health insurance package. They are only offering two options to the extent of it's either employee only or family, not employee, employee plus one, employee plus spouse and family. And so that is going to have a huge hit to every single district with them being the largest district and the insurance calculated based on the statewide average of who all is in those categories. We are, rough estimate, will have 500,000 less in next year's funding just due to that change in Lermi One alone. Then you add, you know, you lose a handful of kids, you know, about every six kids, it costs you a teacher, you know? So I don't want to paint a bad picture and tell everybody that you gotta worry. I just can't confidently tell you that we can accomplish everything right now, especially really only technically being six weeks into the school year. You know, we're just finally getting the extra contracts in there and that increase and starting to generate those reports on where we are landing with regards to budgeting numbers and stuff like that. So we're probably still a good couple months out before I can provide a semi-good estimate. And then, of course, all of it will be dependent upon the ECA, which will not be voted upon until March.
Sorry, just one more thing. I just want to clarify something and just to be as precise as possible, right? When I went and shared out with people and went to all these schools, I didn't tell people where we are with the budget. I don't know that information, that's not my job. Certainly, questions were asked, we talked about the pay increases, we talked about contracts, we talked about employee manuals, we talked about the parental rights policy, we talked about timekeeping rules and things like that. So I just want to be very clear about what was talked about with those, in those presentations.
Anything else for looking forward? Okay, and we do not have an executive session, correct? All right, we are adjourned.